Welcome to January 12th, 2021. Roll call. Mayor West, here. Mayor President, the chair. Councilmember Sullivan.
Here, can we get a couple of people to mute themselves?
If you're on watching this, please mute until, if you want to talk during public discussion, just raise your hand. Councilmember McCall?
Here.
Okay. Special presentation, Proclamation honoring Martin Luther King Jr. Day.
Yes, it's just a little loud there, I apologize to those folks at home. City of Hazel Park, proclamation, a resolution honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. fought bravely for the cause of civil rights and social justice throughout his entire life. And whereas, Martin Luther King Jr. was born on January 15th, 1929, in Atlanta, Georgia, and was tragically killed on April 4th, 1968, in Memphis, Tennessee. And whereas, Dr. King's life traces the very firmament of the struggle for equal rights, a struggle that remains very much ongoing more than 50 years after his death. And whereas, from his education at Morehouse College and Boston University, to his courageous civil rights work, including the Montgomery Bus Boycott in 1955, to the March on Washington in 1965, to the historic march from Selma to Montgomery in 1965, Dr. King served as a relentless testament to the human spirit's unceasing desire for freedom and equality. And whereas, now more than ever, Dr. King's belief in change through non-violence and his unwavering desire to see a world sweltering with the heat of oppression, transformed into an oasis of peace and justice, is as timely and necessary as it ever has been. And whereas, now more than ever, Dr. King's dream is a necessary lesson to all people across the country, including here in our own city, who seek to pursue a life unbarred by the scourge of prejudice. So, therefore be it resolved, that the Hazel Park City Council admends and acknowledges the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. And in doing so, we urge all Hazel Park residents to recommit themselves to the lessons of peace and justice Dr. King preached about more than half a century ago.
Proclamation. Thank you. Civic announcements, anyone from the audience have any civic announcements?
Mr. Mayor, before you proceed, can we get Councilmember Sullivan to state what...
Yes, I'm attending today from Hazel Park, Michigan.
Thank, thank you.
That's an Oakland town.
In Oakland County, correct?
Yes, Hazel Park, Michigan, Oakland County, sorry.
Thank you.
Need to take a pause for a second? We skip over approval of the agenda. Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the agenda as provided.
Second.
A dissention. Okay, we got an agenda, thank you. Thank you for the reminder. Anyone for civic announcements, anyone else? Have a close civic announcements. Public discussion, anyone for public discussion, please raise your hand. Jesse?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and everyone else on this call, as well as those watching. Tonight, I come before you as a member of our boards and commissions. Originally, there were a lot of things that I'd hoped to talk about at this meeting. I was hoping to congratulate everyone here for making it through the trying year of 2020, to offer encouragement for the year ahead, and to talk about the strides being taken with Hazel Park Historical Museum, along with other great things happening in the city of Hazel Park. Unfortunately, with the turn of events that has unfolded, I find myself unable to really give them their due time. I've had so much time to think upon, and a degree of time to go over it, so instead, I think I will tell the story of one man. While I can't be absolutely certain on the veracity of every single aspect of the story, it does replicate my best understanding of real events for this one man. He was born in 1978, and from then on, and his whole life, he aspired to serve his people and his country. He joined the New Jersey Air National Guard only a few months after graduating high school, seeing deployments to Iraq for Operation Southern Watch, and after the horrors of the 9/11 attacks, deployed for Operation Enduring Freedom as well. He completed his term honorably two years later, in 2003. In 2008, he made his ultimate dream come true of becoming a police officer, of not just any force, but of the United States Capitol Police, where he'd eventually become part of their first responder unit. Then, on one fateful day, just this last Wednesday, not even a week ago, his jurisdiction was set upon by a lawless mob incited to violence by the words of numerous politicians, both elected and appointed, performing his duty to protect all those within. He confronted the mob, who had breached the very US Capitol building, whereupon one of the attackers struck him with a fire extinguisher. While the attackers were successfully repelled, and many thought appeared his injuries weren't severe, he collapsed shortly after returning to his post, having suffered severe internal bleeding and trauma. He was rushed to the hospital, and in spite of the best care available, the wounds proved too great, and he passed away the next day. This man's name was Brian D. Sicknick. He was a Capitol Police Officer, and a hero who fell in the line of duty during one of the darkest days of American history. Both when he joined the National Guard, and later the Capitol Police, he sworn oath that he would defend the Constitution and the United States of America. And like him, countless other Americans have taken similar oaths across this nation, even for duties that have not called upon one, to be ready to lay down one's life if necessary. I myself, along with the entire city council here, and several others present on this call, are among them. There are millions of us. So in telling the story, I wish everyone to reflect upon what it means to commit to a cause greater than oneself or any one man, what it means to hold an oath, and what it means to be an American. In just this past week, we witnessed the results of those that would violate their oaths, and what lies at stake. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public announcements, other comments? Full of discussion.
I have a public announcement.
I'm sorry, who's it?
Oh, their hands are off the court.
Oh, yeah.
Charlie is a genius.
They're up there.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Hey, everybody. Can you see me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that, I'm at my dad's house cleaning stuff up, I was delayed longer than expected. But my name's Charlie Cavell, I'm our county commissioner for Hazel Park, and I just wanted to give everyone a quick COVID update. So first, I want to give you some numbers, then I want to tell you what is available for you, or what you can do while waiting to get an appointment to receive the first of two doses for the vaccine. And then third, I want to just give you a quick plug for how strong and hard Oakland County people have been working to make it so that you can get the vaccine in a timely and effective way. So first, just to give you the perspective, the state of Michigan has been receiving 60,000 doses of COVID vaccine per week. And now that's using the Pfizer vaccine, which requires two doses, so 30,000 people a week in the state of Michigan are able to get this vaccine. Oakland County, over the last four weeks, has received 6,800 doses, including 975 new doses today. There is, there are no appointments available right now, and Oakland County is getting about 1,950 doses a week, again, from that 60,000 that the state of Michigan gets. So, while waiting for your appointment, if you're 65 and up, or if you're in Phase 1A, because you live in a long-term care facility, work as an EMS, or a central worker, what we can do, which also, mind you, that group of Phase 1A and 1B in Oakland County alone is about 225,000 people, which means over 400,000 doses will need to be given just to Phase 1A and 1B. And me, a 30-year-old, I'm gonna be, you know, dose number 1.3 million. So just giving us the perspective of how early on in this cresting of the wave we are to getting vaccinated. So things you can do while waiting to get your vaccine, first, you can call the nurse-on-call, and I'd be happy to assemble this to the clerk to send out to everybody, but it's 800-848-5533. Again, that's 800-848-5533. Second, if you want to text to receive updates, you can text the word OAKGOV, O-A-K-G-O-V, to 28748. And third, if you want to get e-updates, you can sign up on oaklandcountyvaccine.com. Again, that's oaklandcountyvaccine.com. Now, what Oakland County has been doing, because this is a very fast-moving thing, as you're all aware, is just today, Oakland County, in an effort to make nurse-on-call more accessible, because there has been some hold time, and there also has been a busy signal in the last week, because at its peak last week, I just heard from the Health Director for Oakland County Government, there were 28,000 calls in one hour. So Oakland County, as of today, has expanded its capacity. So if you want to call to receive information, call the nurse-on-call, anytime between 8:00 and 6:00, Monday through Friday, or 9:00 to noon Saturdays, and someone will pick up, a real-life nurse, I've chatted with two nurses, myself, to double-check and confirm that the system is working. Second, Oakland County has the capacity to receive 12,000 doses a week. Our health team and all the people that work in the Health Department for Oakland County have the ability to inoculate 12, well, 6,000 people, 12,000 doses a week. So Oakland County, last week said we want 5,000 doses from the state of Michigan, this week we're saying we want 10,000 doses from the state of Michigan. Again, Michigan only has 60,000 doses to give, but we have the capacity to give 12,000 shots a week. So we can do this, and once we start cresting that wave again, we'll be able to reach that tipping point. So things will start accelerating quickly. Third thing and final thing, to let y'all get back to it, and this is the most exciting thing I'd say, is if you go to oaklandcountyvaccine.com, coming up before January 20th, so that's next Wednesday, there will be an opportunity and a way for you to register to have a spot in the queue, to be able to receive the vaccine if you're in Phase 1A or 1B. And that will be live by no later than January 20th. Again, go to oaklandcountyvaccine.com for e-updates, but then also check it regularly to be able to see when you can sign up to fill out a form on that website to get your spot in line to get the first of your two vaccinations that you'll need. And also, if you have any other questions about this, or racial, social, economic justice, or infrastructure related to the county, or affordable or inclusive housing, or criminal justice, or anything related to county government, please call, text me at 248-807-4347. Again, that's 248-807-4347. Thanks for giving me all that extra time, everybody.
Thank you, Charlie. Regina Weiss, to see you're on there.
Yes, hello, good evening, everyone. I'm so excited to be with you all tonight. I believe this is my first time coming to this meeting as your new state representative for the 27th district, which obviously includes Hazel Park, also the communities of Berkeley, Huntington Woods, Oak Park, Royloke Township, Pleasant Ridge, and Ferndale. And I'm excited to be getting to work, we have opening day tomorrow, and there's a lot going on. But I just wanted to give a quick update and introduce myself for those who haven't gotten a chance to meet me yet. And as I said, we're just getting started. The number one thing that we're hearing right now in our office that folks are having issues with are regarding unemployment. And so, just wanted to give a quick update on that. First of all, this past weekend, the unemployment agency began, in Michigan, began paying $300 in supplemental pandemic unemployment compensation payments, or PUC payments. And anyone who's on regular state unemployment insurance or extended benefit programs should begin receiving those. It's payable from December 27th, 2020, through March 13th, 2021. And again, we'll provide an additional $300 per week for anyone who is receiving at least a dollar a week currently. Claimants don't have to do anything or take any action right now in order to receive that benefit, it'll be paid automatically after they certify. Now, if anyone is having any issues with their unemployment, and they have not already reached out to my office, or previously to Rep. Wittenberg's office, or if anyone just wants to follow back up again, there's a few different ways you can do that. The easiest way is to either go on our website or email us. Our website is hosedems, D-E-M-S dot com backslash Regina-Weiss. And Weiss is W-E-I-S-S. And if you go on the website, there is a link to a form to fill out if you need assistance with unemployment. You can also email us at regina Weiss at house dot M-I dot gov. And if you're sending an email, please, about unemployment, please include your name, address, your phone number, and your claim number if you have it. And you can also call our office as well, if you prefer. Our number is 517-373-0478. And again, if you're calling, you want to include that information. And because of COVID, all of my staff right now is working remotely from home, and so if you do call about unemployment or any other issues, you'll leave a voicemail, but someone will follow up with you very quickly. As I said, I'm super excited to get to work. I know unemployment is top of mind right now, because it's an issue that most folks, many folks are dealing with. But if anyone has any other concerns, any other issues, please feel free to reach out. And also, if you go on our website, again, the address for that is hosedems dot com backslash Regina/Weiss. You can sign up for our e-news. We'll be sending out a lot of updates on what's going on at the state level, so it's a good way to be involved. And if you were previously signed up for Rep. Wittenberg's, you'll still continue receiving ours. But again, thank you, it's great to see council, and looking forward to representing Hazel Park.
Thank you, Regina. Anyone else wishing to speak? With that, we close public discussion. Hi. Council, approve of the consent agenda. Mr. Mayor, I move approval of items 1 through 13 on the consent. Leading, support, sorry. A dissention, discussion. District reports. Yes, Mr. Mayor, the administration respectfully requests approval for the amount of $13,192 for agreement between the two favorable parties, engineered solution, and this agreement will have a PRV statement expected calibrated with other general affairs may be these stations in fact operative. Counsel? I move approval, Mr. Mayor, of the PRV contract, service agreement with engineered solution.
I'll support.
A discussion? Dissention? Motion passes. This is to show cause hearing, 11408 East Elza. Roger. Welcome for that. Welcome, Mr. Pinch. 1408 East Elza. This is one more.
Yeah, we're recommending condition property. It's just not being maintained, my understanding is the owner is out of state. And we've made multiple times attempts to get them to respond, to at least stop it from deteriorating. Rook is completely integrated, a lot of water flowing into the building, you've got ceilings that are beginning to collapse in, and we've got some photographs of water escaping the building, the building completely loaded with junk debris throughout the entire mold. Yeah, we've got that going on, and the garage is dilapidated.
An offset.
Yes, it is, it's structurally, structurally, it's got some real issues, and not safe at all. We're recommending from building department end, because of lack of the ability, or the concerns of trying to maintain property is not doing well at all, and it appears to be in abandoned piece property.
And the taxes are low, over 17,000. Communications have been given pursuant notice, unresponsive. It's just been sitting there deteriorating, we've gone through popular processes, been forced by the council, through the ordinance. And the hearing officers recommend demolish both the house and the garage due to its horrible dilapidated unsafe conditions, and it is just full of mold. Thank you, I'm crying with my mask, yeah.
Counsel will be your closing of this case. Mr. Mayor, you govern the public conference. About public hearing, 1408 East Elza, wishing to speak, any one in the audience? Saying no one will close a public hearing. Mr. Mayor, the administration recommends that this house and this garage located at 1408 East Elza be demolished within 30 days. Counsel?
If you may, that's...
Okay, the one with the glasses gets to read the most.
Three people per journal.
Based upon the findings of the building official of dilapidation, non-conformance, and the costs exceeding some value in its present dilapidation condition, the substantial repairs which are required and the hearing officer's order dated 11/18/2020 within 30 days, the house and the garage located at 1408 East Elza, Hazel Park, is to be affirmed.
Second.
A dissention, more discussion? Motion passes. Anything about that, please? Could you make sure that the windows are urgently boarded up, Carl, please?
Yes, sir.
So, if it's getting that person's off?
Yes.
Takes us to 23386 Elville. Mr. Mayor, at the request of the city attorney's office, the administration is recommending this item be pulled from the agenda. And they got due notice? They received due notice, there were extenuating circumstances with this, the individual had in fact submitted plans to us as requested by the hearing officer, and at some point, the city of Hazel Park did not process those plans. So, we met with the individual and his attorney today, actually Melissa Schwartz did, and the stuff is better with them, we believe we have them on track.
Yes, we do.
And could you relate to them, I see there's a lot of go by this different areas, so looking forward to it.
Absolutely, I'll be in contact with his counsel tomorrow, and we'll do that. Thank you.
And we'll take that option. With those comments. Okay. This is to 1109 East Pearl, show us here. Let's see, open up the public hearing for 1109 East Pearl. Anyone here speaking in behalf of 1109 East Pearl? Speaking about 1109 Pearl. The closed public hearing. Over here. Mr. Mayor, again, based upon the findings of the building official of dilapidation and required repairs necessary to the garage, otherwise make it safe, they exceed the value of the garage in its present dilapidated condition. So we are requesting that Mayor and Council affirm the hearing officer's order dated 10/21/2020 to demolish the garage located at 1109 East Pearl. Pinch?
The garage is, the structure is a huge destruction, but it should be demolished within 30 days.
It's not enough.
Yeah.
They tried to negotiate with the homeowner?
The homeowner is deceased, Mr. Mayor, and we have taken great measures to communicate to any interested individual, including family members. I had actually called out and spoke to the funeral director of the funeral home that handled the funeral, to try to reach family members, none of them wished to get involved or to do anything. It's been sitting there in this garage, being also not only dilapidated, but very unsafe, as Rod you're saying, it really needs to come down soon, I have an updated picture of today. Yes, and notice has been provided, we've done all the procedures that we need to do according to our legal.
All right, thank you. Now you have a motion, something? Yeah. What's up?
The motion is, yes, we have a motion.
Go ahead, Alissa.
I was gonna second it. I'm waiting for the one with the glasses to read it, Andy.
Based upon, I'd like to make a motion to, based upon the findings of the building official of dilapidation and required repairs necessary to the garage to otherwise make it safe, exceed the value of the garage in its present dilapidated condition, and to affirm the hearing officer's order dated 10/21/2020 to demolish the garage located at 1109 East Pearl.
Support.
Dissonance, exception? Motion passes. This is the boards and commissions, we have the Oakland and the Brownfield Development Authority as a recommendation, and Mike Nezakelli.
He has resigned, we thank him for his many years of service in Hazel Park, not only as a member of the Brownfield Development Authority, and the Tax Board of Review, and many other areas, he also worked for us, and he's a PPW director, and worked this day for many years, he chose to retire. He chose to retire, so we will like to place him, Mr. Chairman.
There are a motion to that thing.
I'm going to appoint Jared Gengels to the Brownfield Development Authority.
I'll second.
There we go, several seconds. A discussion, discussion. I'd like to send a very nice plaque to Mr. Masickelli for his contribution to our community involved here, if you don't mind.
We can do that. Mr. Mayor, we have some other boards and applications, board and commission applications. Well, what I would like to do is I'll have a few boards office, I'll work with them before the next meeting to give you an update and list of all the applicants that we have.
And I see what I think we can move on, first forward to the Main Street.
Yes.
Board, you know, my, read a motion and elect them.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kurt Lord to Main Street Hazel Park.
And support for that?
Support.
A discussion. Motion passes. And we'll go through the other ones, take your recommendations.
Yes.
And base it down to new business.
Mr. Mayor, I have requested of each of you to give me a list, I have some lists of council applicants that you would like to schedule for an interview. And again, obviously we have a significant number of applicants, all of whom look to be qualified, good people. We only have one appointment though that we can make, and so we're gonna have to cut the process down a little bit. So I've asked all of you to give me five names and I think what your, what majority of you have indicated is you would like to meet again on Tuesday next week and begin the process of interviewing those applicants who have been selected for an in-person interview.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
And we will hold those interviews at.
We'd like to do them in person if possible, if someone has a reason why, medical reason or a specific reason why they cannot attend or they need to zoom in, we will let you know, we will have those capabilities there as well. But again, majority that expressed in the, for in-person interviews if possible. Again, there are, you know, there are some applicants here that simply none of us know. And again, I think, you know.
I, I just thought to me as a rec center, as you and I discussed, would be, we can use the big room, we can all socially listen very well. As council people and mayor, we can all set different areas and have the applicants stand up in the hallway and bring one at a time at twenty feet away. By the six o'clock next Tuesday.
And anybody who has had an active COVID infection or is, you know, exposed to the, on the alternative arrangements for them.
Just to note, this will be a masks required interview, everybody will be required to wear masks in that building.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Also, we'd like to do those, we're gonna also follow up by that, like the two weeks from then.
Yeah, well, now the following weekend, I would anticipate a staff meeting. And you will make the appointment at that staff meeting on the last Tuesday again.
That way we can get it all settled around and have a new member to our board. That's on, good with your counsel, everybody in agreements? Yes. Alyssa? Sorry, what can you tell me, I didn't, I didn't see it, sorry.
I was looking at the date for that one, sorry.
That's where I'm going to, I'll pick it with my date.
And can you leave the other, go ahead.
The, those candidates, and again, like I said, no knock on anyone here, we've all looked at the application, there's a lot of very bright, well qualified talented people with a lot of energy and talent to give to the city of Hazel Park. And obviously, only one person can be selected, I would encourage everybody who did apply, even if you're not selected, to look for ways to become involved with the city of Hazel Park, whether it is serving on boards and commissions or volunteering with one of our new volunteer opportunities. We would love to have you be part of the Hazel Park family and make a contribution so that that is noticed.
Thank you. Any other new business for the council? I have one thing I want to bring in. We contracted with the Nine Mile Project for the pantry a couple of years ago.
Yes.
Are we doing any follow-up with that company, that we owe the back money from that company to solidify the trial repairs that they wrote that they did not do?
We have supposedly, and again, this is something that we're in discussions with our engineering firm. Okay, and Tom may wish to address this at length as well. Again, we're not pleased with all the level of work that was done on Nine Mile, but apparently we have paid for only the work that was done. So again, it's, it went more than we expected it to go, we're not pleased, I don't believe we will ever use that contract again for any reason or purpose, nor will I recommend them to anyone, but Tom can speak at that if you choose this and wants to add anything to that. But I think, I don't know, there's much to add, I wasn't.
Tom can bring something to this, maybe if he's able.
Yeah.
Okay, any other new business? Communication for the department heads, anyone, I see Tim Young there, you want any comments? You got it on mute to talk.
Good evening, everyone, happy new year to you. Thank you for approving those two items for my department, that'll be very helpful and help us move forward. I just wanted to drop a quick note, back in July, when we implemented the new water rates for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year, GLWA did a deferral on their water cost for some COVID relief, so we hadn't been charging the water side to the rate that was approved, we kept it at last year's rate. However, that has ended as of January first, so the new rates will start up as of January first. So residents will see that twenty-three cent increase on their water bills, they'll be receiving near the end of February. Just FYI to everybody, when they look down and see it's just a twenty-three cents more.
All right, thank you very much, I had an update.
Can we make sure that we have something that alerts residents?
Yeah, we'll, we will put it on social media.
Right, right, clarification, so that's twenty-three cents per unit of water, right?
Yeah, just the water side only, the sewer side never changed, that's built through Oakland County, they did not do a deferral, so that we passed on that whole rate as, as we should. Just the water side, now that we do have, that is on our, our frequently asked questions on the website. So this whole deferral explanation is on, has been on there since we, since we implemented it. So it's been out, out there, but we'll put something out there, Facebook and other social ideas.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And remember, for the record, this increase was already approved by city council prior to this fiscal year. But because the county deferred passing the increase on to us, we also did not pass the increase on here. Now they're doing so, so now we are having to pass it on, fortunately.
Chief, please. Sure. There's that go. I don't know, I need to share it on the other one. Yeah.
Actually, well, yeah, because I don't want to.
Okay.
There we go.
Lean in.
There we go.
There you go. There you go.
There you go.
I just wanted to say, two thousand twenty was a tough year for all of us and for some more than others. I'm thankful for my staff that did a great job this year and I personally wanted to thank some volunteers, our reserve officers, and our also mobile communications support unit. Just yesterday, they gave me a report with their hours and they volunteered eight hundred and eighty-one hours throughout the year two thousand and twenty. Their director and assistant director combined did over six hundred hours of that, that being Steve Stewart and Nick Dragan. I know I take them for granted, but they help us a lot, they help out the fire department and they're great and I'm very thankful for them.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
City clerk?
Nothing.
Lacy? Take us down to the city attorney?
Here.
Anyone? City manager?
Yeah, I just want to say, during these times when everybody seems to be on edge, it's important for us to remember that we are all, each and every one of us Americans. And we need to be committed to an ideal that is higher than political party affiliation. And that ideal is to the Constitution and to those principles of the white man that brought the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution and our evolution towards a more fair and equitable democratic republic. So we need to remember in these periods when we are angry at people who don't see things quite the same way as we are, that we see them, that we do not turn them into the others so very quickly, that we do not dehumanize them so very quickly. Because again, I think we're taking a lot of the wonderful things that we have in this country for granted and the stability that we enjoy here and the security that we enjoy here, that could slip away very quickly if we forget to be more to those principles of the Enlightenment, of constitutional rights and the rule of law that we cherish. So I'm not gonna make a big long speech tonight, other than just tell everyone who's listening to this tonight, remember, you are American before you are a Democrat, you are American before you are a Republican, you are an American of all accounts. So please, listen, be patient, be vigilant. But remember to be loyal to ideals that are higher than party. And of course, the Michigan system of municipal finance, we meant funding, thank you.
Counselperson Sullivan?
Thank you, I wanted to wish everybody a happy new year. Obviously, we've, we've, most of us have come into this new year with a positive outlook on moving ahead. I also wanted to say that I appreciate all of the people that applied for the appointment to city council and I look forward to the interviews and appointments. I also am looking forward to appointing to our boards and commissions. And online with that, I wanted to quote Martin Luther King in celebration of his upcoming Martin Luther King Day, a quote that he said, which is, life's most persistent and an urgent question is, what are you doing for others? And I think that that really exemplifies what we all in service do, you know, we're looking to do is what are we doing for others? That's why we volunteer, that's why we serve, that's why we run for office, that's why we seek to be appointed to boards and commissions. And I just want to tell everybody how much I appreciate that, so thank you, be safe, wear masks.
Thank you. Thanks, I would like to echo, compliment number, Alyssa Sullivan, thank you to everybody that applied for the position. We have a lot of very talented candidates and I'm looking forward to speaking with all of them. I would like to remind everybody that I know that Main Street Hazel Park did a big push for supporting our businesses through the holidays, but some of the toughest times of the year are January, February, March for many businesses. Because after the holidays, people aren't shopping as much, so please support our local businesses as much as you possibly can, whenever possible. And thank you and I hope everybody had a good new year.
Thank you. Air Force One?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, happy new year to everybody and I would like to compliment the city manager on his comments about remembering that we are all here before whatever party we belong to. And thank you and good luck to all the applicants for the vacant city council position. I would like to, I wish it was one row, but we still might have to look out for some bicyclists out there. You see them once in a while. And if you love somebody, tell them if you have children, hug them and tell them you love them every day. And happy new year again and thanks for participating.
Thank you. I also too want to echo some of the comments that were mentioned, that really makes you proud that we have the amount of applicants for the open council seat to see that we have that much participation willing to help out and volunteer in the community. It was been a long time coming that we've had this kind of reaction to someone, people wanting to help out and serve. And as we all know, as council people and the mayor, we serve at the will of the people and we take that wholeheartedly. And this, this sometimes can be a very tough job and making decisions for the betterment of our whole community and whole. I also like to say that twenty twenty is over, we all suffered through it. Now we get to look forward and I think that's the best way to look at it, look forward, hope for a better tomorrow. And I think we'll all be better for it, working together, striving to build a better America together, not diverse, not divided, as I say. And kind of keep an open mind in every viewpoint that everyone else has, as Mr. Closer eloquently stated, that's what we need to do. I also like to say twenty twenty-one will be a great year for us. I think our housing market is booming, our businesses will turn around with the support of others. And that's what I'm hoping for, support of others in the community, it will make the difference in our community. The housing market is going to be to the world and how, how, while we grow. We got a lot of different people coming in our community, different backgrounds, different ethnicities. And we, I am proud to say that we have that diversity, because without that diversity, it would be a boring world. And let's say, thank you for coming out to see me tonight.
You know, Mr. Mayor, before you adjourn, I just want to say, in reading these applications here for city council, the cool thing was that I think in every one of the applications, the applicant stated how proud they were to be part of Hazel Park and how excited they were to see how Hazel Park is growing and transforming and beginning to thrive. And I want to thank you guys on the council for being supportive of that. I want to thank my employees and departments for all the hard work they do to make this season where they are this. And I want to thank the residents themselves for the spirit of civic mindedness and excitement that they have about our community. So yeah, I agree with you, let's make this year fantastic, yeah, two thousand twenty it was.
Let's not talk about it no more.
So let's make yearly. The year that shall have the.
It's like, yeah, it's like the hotel that doesn't have thirteen four, we're just gonna boycott twenty twenty. But, you know, there was a lot of, I like also, I like to say, for all those families that did lose someone in twenty twenty, by our condolences at the city, as individuals, no one should have to go through that.
Thank you. And did you want to set meetings in six o'clock for the coming year?
Let's have a motion to set the meetings at six o'clock on the second, Tuesday, unless otherwise specified.
I'd like to make a motion that we, moving forward, have our city council meetings at six PM instead of seven PM, unless, what did you say? Unless otherwise specified, otherwise.
Have the support to that?
Support.
Support.
Yeah, apparently there's no deciding, motion passes. Hopefully we can get rid of the Zoom thing in a few months and the live show.
I know we get a lot of.
We do, but I think what we need to do, we can Zoom, if we, when we go back to full meetings, we have to do an inclusive screen on the wall.
I agree.
Those people that want to Zoom.
The same other people that.
Exactly. We can still, there, there's nothing that says you can't add that component or you can't run them on Facebook or you can't do these things. So again, you know the difficulties we have with our ancient cable TV system that works sometimes and does not. And we're trying to get that fixed, probably if we can find the right technician to do that. Putting it live on Facebook, I think, is easy and it does give more people. Although we can't always see the Facebook comments, I can't, I read them afterwards if someone tells me. Because we're sitting here, I think it does increase everybody's ability to participate. So if you want to participate, make sure you speak in public discussion because we, we can't hear, we can't see your comments on Facebook. Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Support.
Thank you for coming.
Hey, Mike? Are you guys going to do? Is chief.